Good morning. It is Wednesday, July 20 at 9:01 a.m. and we are about ready to begin council time with the Clark County Council. There were two amendments made to today's agenda at last night's rather late council meeting. So they are as follows. One is the addition of a fourth executive session at the bottom of our agenda, which will cover potential litigation for a period of estimated five minutes. In addition, adding under Old Business, item 2.4, we have the I-5 Bridge Resolution. That has been discussed a couple of times before and it is backup for a final look. So let us begin with public comment. Public comment at council time is for items pertaining to this agenda only. It does not deal with last night's four different public hearings or public hearings in the future or anything that is on a future agenda. It is just today's agenda. So you know the procedure. If you're there in the hearing room, please let staff know of your interest in speaking, whether you're calling in to do star three or at your computer or tablet clicking the raised hand icon. So staff, do you see any individuals from the community wishing to comment?
Uh, Council Chair, we do not in the building and we do not have any raised hands online.
Okay, so we move to Old Business. Is there a motion, please, for approval of the minutes of July 13?
Motion to approve.
And the second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion for changes or additions or any such thing? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as drafted. Thank you very much. Item 2.2 is ARPA Small Projects Update. We look forward to hearing about this.
Laura Young from the Auditor's Office will be presenting the update for the second quarter of the internal ARPA funding projects.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Bowman. The ARPA 2022 Small Projects Fund received three departmental requests in the second quarter. These requests are for one-time funding during the 2022 fiscal year. I'll provide a brief summary of each request and then share the fund balance.
You know what? I can indeed hear you, but I wonder if they could turn up your microphone a little bit. Maybe I'm the only one, but I'd like to have it a little louder.
But Laura, you could just be a little closer to your microphone. We can't control that part on our end. And Chair, you might see if you can increase your volume on your side as well.
I made a hundred percent.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
I can absolutely speak louder. No problem. Uh, the Clerk's Office is the first item up. The Clerk's Office is seeking approval to use ARPA funding to supplement 2022 overtime pay needed to complete mandatory obligations in the amount of $35,000 to supplement overtime pay needed to complete mandated job functions. The Clerk's Office has been unable to continuously fill several positions since the summer of 2021. Although some positions have been filled periodically, the office has also experienced new openings due to retirements, promotions, and staff accepting jobs outside the county for higher-paying jobs. In total, nine judicial proceeding specialists and 21 court assistants have terminated their employment with the Clerk's Office since June of 2021. The second request is for community planning. Community Planning is seeking approval to use ARPA funding to implement the Housing Options Study and Action Plan that was approved by council on May 17, 2022, to address housing affordability in the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area. Community Planning is requesting $200,000 in ARPA funds to assist with quicker implementation of the plan's strategies by utilizing technical support from consultants. These additional professional services will assist community planning in working with stakeholders, updating development regulations, and provided providing needed analysis. The Housing Options Study and Action Plan will provide guidance for county staff, elected officials, and other decision-makers to implement changes to the comprehensive plan, county code, zoning map, and/or implement other non-regulatory strategies that will encourage the construction of additional affordable and market-rate housing that meets the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area's current and future housing needs. The third request is from the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer's Office is requesting $300,000 in funding from ARPA to cover 15% of the total amount of taxes due in the fiscal year 2022. The Treasurer anticipates the most that most homeowners will have the ability to pay to cure minimum amount of delinquent taxes due prior to legal action without ARPA assistance. However, a small percentage of those affected by the pandemic will have no other options except for to provide assistance through the ARPA funding source. The objective of this proposal is to potentially provide financial assistance to property owners on their primary residence who have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and owe delinquent real property or mobile taxes and are subject to the property tax foreclosure process as set out in RCW 84.64 or distraught set out in RCW 84.56.070. This support will help eligible proprietors owners avoid foreclosure and possible eviction and homelessness. The total Q2 ARPA Small Projects Funds requests are 535,000. Thank you.
Are there questions from council? Councilor Madhvi, it looks like you are forming a thought.
Well, I so, you know, I talked to the manager about this and I'd like to talk to each of you. I, you know, one of the few functions we have is setting policy and budgets. And I really feel like the ARPA funding has gotten way out ahead of us. There's a lot of commitments that are being made. And so it's all pretty much gone now. And and we still have funding priorities out there that we could and should discuss. Madam Chair, you asked the question last night about, after I had made the comment regarding a second round for nonprofits and and small businesses, whether all the money was essentially committed. And the answer was yes, from the county manager, but it is not spent. And so we have the opportunity to discuss and set our own priorities as a council on where the money that is not spent will go. So, uh, you know, this all started for me with with the 15 million that we set aside for additional money with my great expectations that we were going to make some real headway in the homeless situation. Five million for shelters. You know, it just is gone. And and I don't know that it was applied in a manner that I had envisioned or the other council members. As far as I know, there is not a single shelter space bed from that $5 million. It all went to mental health and and to commitments that were already in the pipeline prior to ARPA. So I'm not sure how to proceed with this. All these are worthy proposals. The setting aside money for the jail update is absolutely a high priority. But we've also been talking about broadband and other commitments. So now it's kind of getting to the 11th hour where now we can't just freely spend this money because we've run out of it. So I, I mean, I'd like to sit down with Laura and Mark and maybe the manager or maybe one other counselor and just look at a spreadsheet of where all this money is going before we make these final decisions.
What is the plan, Laura and Kathleen, to do exactly as Councilor Madhvi said, to sit down and see the exact status of the funds and where they have gone and where their plan to go?
Um, so I think I mentioned to council, we're going to have an in-depth conversation on August 3 during council time. The majority of the funds have been committed by council per policy decisions by council. Staff have not determined independently any commitments or funding or spending. Michael Torres and Vanessa are going to be providing an update on the 15 million as well as the 5 million. I do believe that they have previously provided information on the 5 million, but they're going to have that ready as well. I think next week we'll have something, but it will definitely be part of the August 3 conversation. The majority of the ARPA funding commitment now is for space needs and the jail. But we will summarize everything that's already been spent per council's direction and committed per council's direction. And then the council can decide on August 3 if you want to change priorities and how that commitment is done. But I, we want to be as clear. And I know that, you know, we've been talking about this funding for many months and I can see how can easily, you know, we can, for me personally, not seeing it in front of me every day. It'll be a good conversation for all, I think, to have and to understand where we're at. But I do want to ensure the council that nothing has been committed or spent outside of council's direction. But August 3, we will have that in-depth conversation and then that can, the council can proceed how we want to go. Because I do think there's going to be some tough conversations and tough decisions for council if you want to take some funding away from space and the jail and provide it elsewhere. So that will, but that is under your purview. And then we'll just have to figure out and determine how are we going to fund some of those projects that are a priority? Because we also have capital needs as well that will be coming forward, not necessarily for ARPA funding, but there's a lot that we have not done in our capital needs. And that will, we're still gathering that information from departments, but we'll have a summary to the council in a couple of months on that as well.
Laura, knowing that the three departments that you mentioned were making requests for today, would like to hear back soon. Would there be a problem as far as their needs if they were to be delayed until August 3 or 4?
So we can do that, but I just want to remind council as well that this commitment that council has done already provided the authority to approve these requests. So it was already approved to have it work through the internal process, much like the external RFP process. And the, what was stated and requested is that staff come back to share with the council, what are we using the funds that were already allocated by council for internal requests? But certainly, you know, you have the authority to change that direction if you would like, but this is under, following the direction that council gave, which was here's a sum of money, have an internal process that you can use for internal requests such as this. Go ahead and move forward and just give us an update on what we're spending it on.
And what was that total allocated?
I believe it was 2 million. Is that correct, Laura?
No, this is 1 million.
What was the total amount?
1 million for 2022.
So it is considerably under that unless there are more requests to come?
The total fund is 1 million for the entire year. So after these three Q2 requests were funded, there would be a balance of 283,768 left in the fund for 2022.
And they can, that, those funds can still be requested. Is that correct, Laura?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Other questions or comments from council? Given that this is a bit of a given at this point, is there any motion that is needed?
I don't believe there is a motion. The request was for staff to come back and provide the information under the prior direction from council.
Well, thank you, Laura, for doing that. Are there any other questions or comments from council?
Just a quick comment with Laura on board. I don't know that you were on last night. I did give you a shout out regarding the, the 2 million or close to 2 million that was spent on the nonprofits and small businesses. Laura's been doing amazing work as far as I can tell. And this is just another example of it. This was money well-spent by ARPA on on her position. So thanks again, Laura, for all you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor.
I, I hate to pass with Treasurer Topper sitting right here and I'm looking at you. And there's $300,000 in assistance to property owners that you are in this pool for. Did you wish to make a comment or just to answer questions? You're on mute.
No, I'm not on mute.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I was here to answer any questions if council had questions. And I also brought my tax service manager, Neil Hire. Just to Counselor Madhvi's comments, you'd be happy to know that these funds will be used to help prevent foreclosure and potential homelessness for homeowners. And this is really a way to keep our shelter beds available to those that are experiencing homelessness. So thank you so much for providing these small project funds. It really does make a difference to your constituents and available to answer any questions after today's meeting if you have any.
And Madam Chair, if I could briefly respond. So I just want to make sure that on every project that was just outlined today, I don't have any objection to them. My comment was in general on the 90-plus million dollars of ARPA funding that I'm not entirely happy with where it's gone despite the broad approvals the council has given. And so the bottom line message is, you know, we're now down to the 11th hour. We're down to allocating this money and actually spending it. I just want to make sure we do it as best we can to get the most bang from the buck. I appreciate this project that your office is behind and it is going to be very valuable to the community.
Counselor, and thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to to address you this morning.
Any further questions for Laura or Kathleen on the Small Projects Update? Okay, thank you very much for being with us this morning. And now we'll move to the Safe Park Update, item 2.3 on the agenda.
Good morning, council. Recall that there have been some discussions between the county and city about an additional safe park location. This is a location that allows people to park in their vehicles overnight in a designated area where there are sufficient restrooms and the like to support them. So there are some current locations within the city of Vancouver and there's interest in expanding. The programs are full. You have to obtain a permit in order to be able to park at one of these locations. And there's a check process that goes into place before someone obtains a permit. And they have a waiting list for obtaining a permit. So I reached out to the city, to my counterpart at the city. The city is willing to pay for the operational costs associated with a safe park location. One of their current locations, just to give you a ballpark estimate, costs them about $400,000 annually to provide the, the staff support, the cleanup, the portable restroom, the washing stations, and all of those things. So they're willing to. They would like to engage in a conversation with the county about what exactly that's going to look like. They would like to have a partnership on the fiscal end, but they're willing to pay for the cost if the county identify a property. Our Parks Department did not identify any county-owned properties that would be suitable for this purpose, absent some really significant property improvements that would be quite costly. I'm working with Michael Torres and the Council for the Homeless to see if we can identify some community partners. Churches are often a source for the safe park locations, but to identify a possible community partner in the unincorporated county for this purpose. So hopefully we'll hear back from Council for the Homeless soon. I'm going to be meeting with Vancouver this afternoon to get a more detailed report from them on what they're looking for. And I'll continue to update the council for a while.
Questions? Comments?
So thanks for that, Lindsay. I just want to clarify or make sure I understood. So the city was willing to basically pony up in a fiscal partnership money. They weren't going to manage, do the RFQ. They just were going to basically help fund the operation and management of an additional site. Is that correct?
That's a good, that's a good question. And I think it's an unanswered question and one that I'm going to address with Erin when I meet with them this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Along with that, Lindsay, if you could get a handle on what would the total obligations be from the county that are expected? It sounds like the, the location itself would be one item. What else? And that would be very helpful in our discussion.
Yeah, and I think that that may be just a discussion that the, the county and city counselors may need to have along with Kathleen and Eric. Because what I am hearing from staff is that the, the city is willing to do the work. They would prefer that the county contribute something. So that's, I think, a discussion that'll, that'll need to happen at, you know, either the councillor level or at the manager level.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we, do we have any sense yet on the sort of size of the number of spaces? As I recall, the city was about 54. Was that something like that? And so are they looking, well, you're going to find out, I guess, what they're looking for, the same size, bigger, smaller?
Ideally, I mean, this has been a good size. And so I don't think that they are wed necessarily to something in a particular size. If there's something that's a little bit larger, a little bit smaller, that we could look at it to see its viability. Identifying potential partners is the challenge upfront. And so ideally, you know, we could possibly go into a larger parcel, a larger space, and only utilize a smaller portion of it, see if it works, and then expand it as it's functioning. But at this point, we're just hoping to find something.
And you're not currently seeing any county land that would fit without significant financial burden?
Without significant financial burden to do the improvements necessary for the parcel to be suitable.
And if I can add too, the city did provide the criteria that they use for evaluating sites such as avoid areas with heightened economic vulnerability, ensure ADA accessibility to and within safe state communities, and give preference to sites within a half a mile of public transit. So I know that has been historically, when the county has talked about this, is the location to services and ensuring that there's still ease of access for those individuals to obtain services. So some of our unincorporated areas are not going to work just for that reason alone as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? I think we look forward to hearing more on this and what the next steps would be in exploring it. So thank you very much. Okay, we look at item 2.4, which is the I-5 Bridge Resolution. I'll just kind of kick off the discussion, if I may. In looking at what we had before us at last night's meeting, there was one sentence in section 2 that can probably be read a couple of different ways. The county council does not support, now catch that "not", not support Clark County residents paying for construction maintenance, et cetera, or capital associated outside of C-Trans or Clark County cities' established co-locations. So it could be read that we do support costs inside of Clark County cities that are established co-locations. Who knows? And that is the concern with that particular sentence. So I was hoping that we would get some suggested different language. If it came on email early this morning, I must admit I haven't seen it yet. But I did send out last, I believe it was last night. Yes, last night after our meeting, I sat down with our white paper and the original section 2 that Lindsay had provided for inspiration in maybe suggesting more clear wording. And if you have that email that I had sent, it was just a very clear sentence from Lindsay's original draft. "The county council opposes every light rail project in Clark County unless it is first supported by a majority of the voters in a countywide advisory vote of the people. The council supports C-Trans, Bus Rapid Transit as the best. We could add the word "current" alternative for rapid transit on the I-5 Bridge because of its cost-effectiveness compared to max light rail options, its effectiveness in serving riders throughout the area, and its agility in responding to evolving transportation needs of the area." I'm sure you remember that from the first discussions that we had with what Lindsay had provided us back then. So given that, what discussion would you care to have, council?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Rylander?
At the risk of reiterating what I said last night, it is clear to me in the feedback that I've had from county residents, including broadly in the county and in District 5, that there is little or no appetite for I-5 Bridge to contain a light rail option for a host of reasons I won't go into. I know that our last discussion, Counselor Lance, had offered up some alternative language to try to sort of soften what we were saying to look for greater acceptability. Subsequently, I understand the City Council of Vancouver has taken a stance in support clearly of light rail. I think it's imperative, more than ever, to come back and clearly state what the council's position is if that is against light rail. So I actually would be supportive of the Chair's revision of the language as outlined in her email. I would add the word "current" as an alternative. And I would offer one other word suggestion change, and that's near the last, end of the last sentence. The word agility could perhaps be flexibility. Other than that, I think that the statement as provided by the Chair is much more concise, much clearer, and doesn't leave the perception open in the back that something could be forced or pushed on to Clark County without the voter approval. The, the other language for me was just too squishy, too, too soft, and left questions unanswered, which did come up last night. Thank you.
Are there comments from council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Olson?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, as I, as I mentioned last night, I thought the process that we went through to get to the language that we considered last night was collaborative and was thoughtful and was respectful. And I'm a little bit concerned that right now we're going completely backwards to language that we had agreed we were going to change. We don't have a seat at this table as a county. I think we all have the opportunity as councillors to, to speak out in terms of, you know, what we want to support, what we don't want to support. I thought we'd come to an agreed-upon language that we considered last night. So if, at this point for me, the idea that we are cooperative and that we are providing an opinion about transportation solutions and options in this county is important, knowing that we don't have jurisdictional input on this, I'm not going to support the change that you, that you recommend this morning. I think we should adopt what we agreed on last week and the week before in language that we all agreed on. So, um, so if, if the council majority this morning agrees to, to change the language and go back to what we had before, I won't be in support of that.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So I was following along with Counselor Olson until the very last. And so I'm really disappointed. I'm hoping that you'll reconsider that fixed opinion. I, I, I want first and foremost to issue this resolution. I think it's long in coming. And, and I secondarily really was very, very hopeful that we could have five councillors on board. And I, and I agree with councillor Olson that I think getting to last night's resolution was part of that process. I mean, it's, it's how legislative bodies work. No individual gets exactly what they want to say. This, you know, this resolution isn't exactly as I would write it, but that's okay. It gets the point across. I was willing to, to vote and approve last night's rendition. And I think councillor Lenz was on board with that, and, and I think councillor Olson was on board. So we had five votes on a resolution that pretty much says what we had hoped it would say. You know, we're, we spend so much time on these resolutions, no matter what the subject, and, and that's okay. But there's a give and take that goes along with it. I want to sign a, a resolution. I agree that the original language is much more clear and definitive. You know, each of us has kind of a foot in a different realm. You know, Metro signed on, Vancouver's signed on, RTC signed on, C-Trans signed on. They're all, you know, joining this narrative of, of light rail. But, and they all, well, C-Trans particularly, I don't think Metro did it so much, but C-Trans particularly put these conditions on their approval. So did RTC. I think those are totally ineffective. And, and what's really interesting is, you know, Metro, in their resolution, basically pointed out that there's going to be operation and maintenance that's going to be on southwest Washington, not Oregon. Every light rail district that I've ever seen anywhere in the country that I know of, and I, and I obviously haven't researched them all, they all carry transportation taxing districts that go along with the line. No one's really talking about that. But the point I'm making is, you know, right off the bat, C-Trans put these conditions in place, and Metro's already issued a resolution that counters it. So I, I, I want to, I'm going to vote for, with the majority because I want to get this resolution out. I think the change that the Chair is proposing is, is a, a good one. And, but it does, I think, then lose councillor Lenz and, and now, as announced, councillor Olson. So I'm hoping that councillor Olson will go along with the, with the majority will here to be more clear in this statement. So that's all I have to say. I, I, I want to get this done and issued, but three votes is not as strong as five.
One of the things that you mentioned, councillor Olson, was the importance and desire for collaboration, and I, I couldn't agree with that more. And I had the vision for that too. And then in looking at the, the language that was proposed, the clarity of it just eluded me. And the possibility for opposite interpretation from what was presented in the white paper and what was, I believe, the, 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 the will of the county as best we know it at this time, it could have gone topsy-turvy. And that was what, that is what is of concern to me. So I was hoping just to tweak this first sentence a bit, but last night as I, as I sat there, I just, I couldn't figure out exactly how to do that. And so in seeing Lindsay's language from the get-go, that just seemed like the, a clear way to go. And that's why I was suggesting that and supportive of it. And I, I wish that it were collaborative of the five of us, but four of us are here, and I wish it were collaborative of the four of us. If it can't be, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think we have a responsibility to represent our position real clearly.
Okay, can I propose another, well, a question to councillor Olson and propose another option?
Okay.
That is to keep the language from last night, but just have an introductory sentence. "The Clark County Council does not support light rail at this time." And then roll in. Is that something councillor Olson would agree to?
So I just, I want to state, first of all, that, you know, we've been working on this for weeks. And we came to an agreement, the five of us, that this would be the language that we adopted at our meeting last night. And then we didn't adopt it. And councillor Lenz wasn't there, and she's not here this morning. So I have a problem just with that, with that we made an agreement, we have the language here that we were going to consider, and then at the last minute, we're going to change it and go back to prior language that we'd already kind of negotiated that we weren't going to use. And so I have a problem with that generally. And now to, I'm not, I wouldn't have a complete objection, councillor Meviji, to, to, to what you're saying. I, I just have a problem with kind of what we're doing because we'd already agreed on the language. We were going to adopt it last night in resolution, and then at the last minute, you know, we changed our minds, and I just, I have a problem with that. And that councillor Lenz isn't here to provide additional input as a representative on C-Trans and RTC. I would prefer that we just adopt the language that we agreed to originally. I think clearly, in this community, people know where we stand on light rail. It's going to happen, if it's going to happen, whether we say we like it or we don't like it. I think it's important that if it does get here, that we have language that says we're not going to, from, from a financial perspective, that this is our position on, on costs and maintenance and what have you. So I don't know. I, I just, I just don't like the fact that we're even having this conversation after we worked so hard to get to the language that we should have adopted, in my view, last night.
So I'm not sure when councillor Lenz will be back. I mean, she wasn't here yesterday, she's not here today. So at this time, you wouldn't consider my change? I mean, I'd like to get a public statement out and get the resolution out. You know, all these resolutions, no matter what the subject, are not final. They're dynamic. They just keep changing until finally we get the votes to, to pass it. So I mean, that's, this isn't that unusual. I mean, I wish there was a better process and smoother process and less, less work that would go into these resolutions, but I guess that's the nature of the beast.
Madam Chair.
Councillor.
I, I just, I am compelled to reiterate that, that the concerns that I had about the, the nebulous nature of the interpretation of the language that councillor Lenz had proposed came up again from the public last night, that opened to interpretation. And I, I just truly believe in my heart, my soul, that the majority of the residents of Clark County want this council to be absolutely clear and don't leave what they might perceive as a backdoor that somehow it could be inserted through some manipulation of interpretation. I just really believe we need to be absolutely clear.
If you decide to make a motion, I'm perfectly comfortable with your adding the word current and changing agility to flexibility. That's a good change. I think we've probably discussed the issues. I'm sorry that councillor Lenz is not here this morning. I didn't know that she wasn't going to be. She had some obligations yesterday, and perhaps they continued on to today. But I think there was even another councillor last night who said, well, good. Councillor Lenz will be here Wednesday when we discuss this, and I thought so too. So, um, anyway, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. Should I read the language as proposed?
If you wish, and I have it in front of me as well. And I'd be happy to provide that to staff later, just so you know.
Then I make a motion that we adjust the language in the, in the proposed document to read as follows. "The county council opposes every light rail project in Clark County unless it is first supported by a majority of the voters in a countywide advisory vote of the people. The council supports C-Trans Bus Rapid Transit as the best current alternative for rapid transit on the I five bridge because of its cost effectiveness compared to the max light rail option, its effectiveness in serving riders throughout the area, and its flexibility in responding to evolving transportation needs of the area."
I second the motion. Further discussion or comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The vote is three to one, and therefore passes.
Counsel, just to confirm, I will make this change and then send this to the Interstate Bridge Replacement Group.
Thank you for that, yes. Okay, new business. The annual parks meeting. We clicked on that link and saw a nice invitation.
So Chair and Council, again, good morning. It's Kathleen. I know Rocky is on this morning as well, so I'll just introduce it, and then he's available for additional details and answering questions. But he has been communicating with other jurisdictions about having a Parks and Recreation 2022 End of Summer Celebration. And this is, the objective of this is, event is to develop a forum where all local jurisdictions can hear from residents on what's going well and what needs improvements moving forward, and really to have a collaborative and open dialogue. So there are some proposed dates that this is being proposed on, on Thursday, September twenty-second, Thursday, September twenty-ninth, or October fifth on Wednesday. Sorry, I'm still a little tired from last night. So we can't have more than two councillors attend this event just because of the quorum issues, and this will not be open to the public with OPMA. Rocky, is there any other specifics that you would like to add?
Thank you, Kathleen. For the record, Rocky Houston with Parks and Lands here in Public Works. So I, I just want to state that this is a, an event that was in the past occurring in the county. We're trying, we've got all kinds of new park professional leadership and new park advisory boards and park commissions, which the city's calling Park Commissions. And this initial one, we're just trying to get the park board members and commissioners together, but I don't want to have any surprises to, to any of you as, as we move forward with this. We'd love to have someone there. But again, this one's going to be primarily focused on trying to just get those park board members and commissioners together to talk, to make, basically to make sure that we're, we're being additive to meet residents' needs throughout the county and working together and trying to meet those recreational needs. This is similar to something that they do for, for Metro, which is that by-state government out of the Portland area and comes over up into here into Vancouver, where they have a, what they call a policymakers' ride. So they would, once a year, ride around and look at the good, the bad, and the ugly of trails and active transportation needs. And so this is sort of a similar thought of trying to get people together to kind of talk about recreation and, and make sure that we're all steering in the same, same direction. So thank you.
Questions or comments?
So I see that the date is blank. I, I like this idea. I really want to participate. The first week of September, I typically go backpacking every year. For the last forty years, I don't have my specific dates in place yet, but do we have an idea of the date?
Yes.
Right now, it's, go ahead, Rocky.
Oh, no, I'll let you. You probably have it right in your fingertips. I was pulling it up.
Um, the proposed dates, and I think it's only one date that they're looking at, is September twenty-second, the twenty-ninth, and October fifth.
Indoor or outdoor?
It's going to be indoor at the, at Lacamas Lake, at the City of Camas's facility there. I can't remember the name of that building.
Other questions? Well, thank you for keeping us informed.
So if two councillors are interested, I did hear councillor Meviji. Is there another councillor who's interested in attending this?
I would be if it is appropriate.
Okay. Chair and councillor Olson, are you okay with that, with councillor Rylander and councillor Meviji? Okay, thank you.
Councillor reports. Maybe we're all still numb from last night, Kathleen.
The, I, I can say that the battleground parade went well. There were lots of people, lots of kids, lots of candy. You had to be a little careful. I was driving in the parade and had to be, had my grandson sitting in the passenger seat, and he'd got the wave down really well. It just kind of twists the hand. But the bigger concern was just making sure there were no kids running out in front of the vehicles, just because it was scamper after the candy. But it went well, had lots of people, and it was, was well attended.
You have to be careful where that candy is tossed, don't you? Other comments from councillors or reports from councillors?
So very briefly, thank you for the vote last night for, on behalf of veterans and park passes. The, Lindsay had done some work, follow-on work, with how conservation funds could work or don't work for commemoration of those that make donations to the conservation effort. And I think you know the topic I'm thinking of. And essentially, the outcome is conservation funds really can't be paid for any kind of monument or plaque. However, most of the costs are relatively fairly de minimis. You know, either a private entity comes up with the funds or general funds could pay for, you know, a fifteen-hundred to thirty-five-hundred-dollar commemorative of whatever family made the donation. So I did want to follow up in light of some ongoing conservation efforts. And thank you, Lindsay, for that research.
Hearing no further reports, we'll turn to work session requests, the first being Public Health Medical Examiner's Office Fee Schedule adoption.
Yes, the council has received some initial information from Public Health in regards to potential adoption of fees to support the medical examiner's office. I believe we're one of the only MEs' offices in the state that does not have this program. So this is just a work session request to go over that proposal and options in detail to allow council to answer questions or ask questions and, and provide some direction to staff as they're getting ready for the 2023 budget adoption. They did ask for July twenty-seventh. I did let them know we're not meeting next week, so we will be scheduling this at the beginning of August if council approves.
Comments? I felt like their discussion with us in one-on-ones was very clear and, and well-presented. Therefore, I thought sixty minutes for the presentation for a work session was probably too lengthy, and that forty-five would be just fine, but that's not an important point. I certainly support their doing this on August third. Any other comments? Are there any objections to having this on August third?
I would even go for half an hour presentation with leaving the remainder for question and answer.
Sure, I, I would too. I, I think they're, they've got it down as far as how to present this clearly. Would you communicate that to them, Kathleen, please?
Absolutely.
I think they're not here this morning. So there are no objections to having this on August third, correct? Okay, so Superior Court, National Centre for State Courts. Okay. So Superior Court, National Center for State Courts, case flow, calendaring, and operations study.
So I'll provide the high level, and I know the Superior Court Administrator is on this morning as well. But Superior Court did contract with a consulting service with the National Center of State Courts to evaluate some of their processes in the courts. They did receive the report, and they have a desire to share the findings of that report and the recommendations with the council. Some of this may have some budget implications or potential that they will be presenting. And so they're looking to have a 30-minute dialogue with the council either in August or September. And Cheryl Stone is the Superior Court Administrator. Please add anything you would like at this time.
I need to find my unmute button. Yeah, I think Kathleen accurately summarized this. Thank you, Council, for considering the work session. I would just say that the report will be made available probably by the end of the week or the first part of next week. So you'll have that well in advance. There are some pretty significant changes recommended, which we are excited about at Superior Court. And I think the report will be interesting to the council as well.
Cheryl, this is a meaty report, is it not? I'm wondering if 30 minutes is enough.
Sure, it is a meaty report, and, and we are happy to spend more time reviewing it with you. It may be, it may be good for you to read the, have the report in hand and then decide how much time you'd like to spend on it and, and questions that you may have. Certainly, you can always submit those questions in advance also of the work session. We just wanted an opportunity to lay it out for you and, and discuss some of the decisions that the Superior Court judges have made in moving forward.
Other questions or comments from council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Chair? So, did I hear that there could be some budget implications based on the report?
Yes, and those, yeah, any recommendations that will impact the budget will be presented and proposed during the 2023 budget process.
Okay. I guess, I guess from a forewarned, this forearmed, is it sooner, like August, better than waiting until September, just to be able to go through, have the discussion, be considering the implications before we get closer to the budget timeframe?
I don't know if that's going to be an issue, because we already have our budget timelines out there. So Superior Court or any department can go ahead and submit that, because there's a lot of requests that come through that does not come to council ahead of time. So I don't think that will impact that. So I think having earlier, I, I'm positive Superior Court's going to be putting together decision packages, and I'm already working on them now. And then they, you know, I, I think this is just to answer questions for council and just for awareness, not necessarily approval of any budget action.
I guess I would just making sure that, that if there was more time needed, that we just do it earlier than later. But if it's not critical, then...
Yeah, and the dates that Superior Court chose, their schedules are really tough with the judges. So this is based on their availability as well.
And I would just add that the, the majority of the report isn't a budget impact. The majority of the report is really more about process change and efficiency that's gained in a different calendar and system. And so, there are some positional changes that they recommend in the report that would have some level of budget impact that we have been funding already in one form or another, but there would be some additional budget impact. So we'll, that will come clear when we read through the report. But most of it is really procedural process, change recommendations, and that would create more capacity in the court system and provide more efficient path for cases to completion.
Madam Chair, based on some other conversations we've had in other venues, including law and justice, and just in general, I, I really would recommend that we give the court as much time as is they reasonably need. So, I mean, I had given at least 45 minutes. It sounds like there's a lot for them to present, and I'd like to not be rushed through it. I'd like to not rush them.
We can certainly let them know. It was their request for 30 minutes. That was not staff's request. But we can, Cheryl can certainly share with the presiding judge that if they desire additional time, that they have that flexibility.
We can expand that to an hour and plan a 45-minute presentation, and then time for questions.
That sounds good. Any, is there agreement on that? I see Counselor Meviji's thumb up. Mine is, Counselor Olson's is. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Is, does Lindsay have additional reports on policy issues this morning?
I do. Just one quick update. We received the bill from the consultant that's doing the Vancouver Lake work, and they were able to expend through the full $30,000 that was appropriated through June 30th of this year. So I know that was a question that the council had, just wanted to give you that quick update.
Thank you. We have four executive sessions that are estimated to take 40 minutes. That would put us out of the executive session and back into council time at 10:40 a.m. So I'll see you, council, in executive session, and then back at council time at 10:40.
Madam Chair, if I could just have one minute with Lindsay on policy issues, just, you know, we're going to be coming up pretty soon with our legislative priorities. One that I thought that was teed up at one of our meetings was the, the idea of Camp Bonneville, supporting or making available to, to the state a police academy, which the state is short of capacity. So I, I don't know if that's generating steam within the legislature to create another academy or not. But in the transfer documents from the Army to us, that was one of the specifically listed activities that would be permissible at Camp Bonneville. I really like that idea. If we could, in southwest Washington, have a law enforcement academy. So I, I'm just wondering what would be involved in kind of exploring that, to see if the council wanted to support that as a legislative priority with our delegation?
Yeah, absolutely. So where they're at in the process, we talked a little bit about this with the trust land transfer. So the state agencies are preparing their budgetary asks that will go to the Office of Financial Management, OFM, usually sometime in mid to late August. And then the state does their process, the governor releases his budgets, usually in December. So I will reach out to folks if this is part, if an expansion of the police academies is going to be within the governor's budget, and then likely within the state budget, we'll know here pretty soon. But they'll need to be working on that right now. So I'll reach out to folks and see where they're at in that process. Obviously, if it's not proposed by the state agencies, the legislature can add it come January. But that's a little bit more of an uphill battle. But certainly something I'll reach out and get some more information and get back with you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to collective bargaining for 15 minutes. Real estate authorized by RCW 42.30.110, Section 1B for 10 minutes. Potential litigation, the same RCW except Section I for 10 minutes. And the same section, potential litigation, different litigation for five minutes. It is now 10 o'clock, since it takes us a bit of time to go in and out of council time and executive session. I would look for us to be back at council time at 10:45 a.m. Thank you.
Hello, council is extending session for five more minutes and will be returning at 10:50. Thank you. Hello again, council is extending executive session for another 10 minutes and will be returning at 11. Thank you. Hello, council is extending executive session for five more minutes and will now be returning The council has extended their executive session for another five minutes and will be returning at 11:10. Thank you.
This is Wednesday, July 20. It is 11:12 a.m. Council has completed four executive sessions. There is nothing to report out for action to be taken following them. So we are back in council time for the singular purpose of adjourning the meeting. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.